First, I'd like to thank all of you all for coming out. I see the Deacons from the New Mountain Top Baptist Church, my church, they're out here enforcing these men doing a great jobs at the church and in the community. And I see my sister right here from New Jerusalem. And she always here and support us and they got a new pastor, I gotta meet the new pastor. And I see the boys, the girls' club, boys' club rather, and the Cub Scout, I got the little Cub Scout back there. And I would like, glad to see you all out here. Well, tonight, what we want to do, and I see the chief of the school police, I recognize him, Chief Waylon, he's back there as well. But tonight, what we want to do is go over some vital information that a lot of the people in our community, they don't hear about. You know, they hear about crime, they hear how crime is going on, but they really may not understand what the true nature of the crime really is. They may see some in the paper that say Douglas Field is off the chart of crime. Well, what we're gonna do tonight is go over our annual end of the year report. And it will tell you all the information that we received last year concerning crime and the various other issues, various other information that Captain Stafford, he'll talk about that. Also, I want Captain Stafford to talk about use of force. You know, especially for the men and the church that, that understand what will happen, what is our policy on use of force? Now, I tell you, we put all this out on our Facebook page. You know, we're completely transparent, but here's what we found out. That our people that we serve, they don't look at our Facebook page, they won't come out to hear the information that we have for them. So what we have to do is go to the street. Now, since COVID, we haven't been able to get out on the street. Now, there's one of my streetwalkers right there, you know, hold your hand up, streetwalker, you, hold your hand up. Get your hand up in there. All right. Yeah, yeah, we get out in the street and so if the people don't come here, we go to the people. So we're gonna go over that information. And then once, he gonna deal with this citizen police interaction. You know, what the police can, what the police cannot do, where your rights lie in there. Cause see, a lot of people are telling their kids, they telling them wrong information. Get stopped by the police. You call me. Call your daddy. Don't do that, that's wrong information. Now, they got a license, they driving the car, they need to sit down and talk to the officer, just like talking to anybody else. Because you start telling them, call your dad if they stop you. You know, little Johnny or little marijuana will get pulled out of that, through that door. Because they violating the officer oath of office, they're doing his duty. So that's, you know, just talk. That's all you gotta do. So we're gonna go over this right quick, and then after that, we're gonna go over these gangs. You know, we got gangs coming out here, you know, we, we're not a place that's, is not affected by gangs, we may not have them as much as they might be in some other areas because we proactively working on this gang issue in Douglas Field. Matter of fact, we just arrested about nine to 10 individuals, which we probably will be putting that gang charge on them. Now, I say we'll be putting the gang charge on them, they'll be putting that gang charge on themselves. Cause that's what the law is. The law is to get the good people, if you stay within the bounds of the law, you don't have to worry about the law. You don't have to worry about all the police if you're doing what's right. And when you're doing what's wrong, when you start trying to look over your back and all this kind of thing. So I'm gonna sit down and I'm gonna call up Captain Stafford. He's, he does some everything around here, training, and he does all IA investigation. And you know, I, I used to call him something else, he came up with a fancy word, what you over?
Office of Professional Standards.
Office of Professional Standards. Yeah, I just said, hey, he the IA man. So y'all give up a Stafford, he gonna give you some information, take notes, and then we're gonna ask some questions.
Chief Waylon, don't you go nowhere, I'm gonna let you say something.
Good evening, everybody. Let me just first say I apologize for the chief calling you a streetwalker as soon as you came in the police department.
But, I knew that you said I'm pretty bad.
For some of us are old enough to know, that doesn't always mean what he was trying to say. We appreciate you volunteering though. We appreciate you volunteering. My name's Brad, and as we go through this, we have questions, we can take questions. I'll probably bring you a microphone, don't get nervous, but that allows it to be recorded onto City TV, but don't be shy. One, we're gonna kinda do two different things tonight, but I think you'll see as we go through and we talk about them, how they, how they intermeld and play off of one another. We started doing the end of the year report, we call it, about five years ago. And what it was for, in agencies at the time, and still for many agencies, is they generate stats from, from each division about what we do. How many arrests did the detectives make? How many arrests does patrol make? How many use of force incidents did we have? So on and so forth. And that went to the chief so that they could decide how to do day-to-day business, how to make changes, how to forecast for the future. When I took it to the chief, he said, put it on Facebook, put it in the newspaper. That's what, not what I had in mind when, when we did it, but we've been doing it ever since. And I think it's a great idea. There shouldn't be anything to hide, and it also creates a lot of conversation, I think, between the citizens and the law enforcement agency about what we're doing, why we're doing it, and so on. And the more conversations we can have between you and us, the better all of us are gonna be. We're the same. The police are the people, people are the police. And that division that's come, where we start to insulate ourselves, is why we're having the problems that we're having in this country right now. So, thank you for coming and being interested and showing interest in, in your local agency. And so, we're gonna, we're gonna open our, open ourselves up and, and share with you what we do. This is gonna feed into that because one of the next things that we constantly get from people that they're interested in is, why do we do things the way we do them? Why, as the chief started talking about kids getting on the phone and calling and, you know, doing things during a traffic stop, or doing things during a Terry stop, we call them, we'll talk about that in just a minute. Why do we do things the way we do them? It's because of the way that the law works, and also the way that we're trained. There are parameters on us that we have, there are rules that we have to follow. Not to say that there's no bad cops that break the rules, but this is the way that it's supposed to go. So there's a reason why we do certain steps. And I, I think it's important that we let you in on how we train the officers and why we do it the way we do it. And one of the very first things that they learn in the police academy, and then they're harped on multiple times a year in this agency during in-service training, is this slide right here. There's three types of encounters the police can have with a citizen. The first one's a voluntary encounter, pretty simple. Hey, sir, how you doing? My name's Officer Stafford, I just wanted to come up and say hi, how's everything going? So on and so forth. Now, if I think that maybe he was involved in a crime, I might slip some of that in and talk to him about that a little bit, but I have no evidence that he's been involved in a crime. And if he decides that he wants to walk away from me and not answer any of my questions, can he do that? It's a voluntary encounter. You sure can. He can walk, run, ride his bike, however he wants to leave, he can do that. Usually, they don't do anything that nice, usually they use some expletives on us and tell us they don't care to talk to us right now. And the officers have to be patient and understand the law enough to let it go. Now, this is where sometimes, some of them get themselves in trouble because, you know, nobody should be saying these bad words to the police or whatever they get in their mind. That's just not the case. It's a voluntary encounter, it's voluntary on both parts. The next thing that can happen to us out there is we start to get our, what they call articulable reasonable suspicion that a crime has taken place, and we want to stop that person briefly to question them about it. So, you can't just suspect somebody might be doing something, you have to have suspicion you can articulate. So once you have that, then I can say, hey ma'am, can I talk to you for a second? And she says, no, you can't. And I can say, well, yeah, we're gonna talk for a minute. Okay? Cause I believe you may have shoplifted, let's say as an example. Okay? And the reason for that is, they saw you put some stuff in your bag on the surveillance camera, and I just wanna make sure that if that's you, then, you know, you're gonna be in trouble. If it's not you, I'll apologize and you'll be on your way. Now, here's where sometimes the public gets in trouble because they believe they can just walk away. And it's not a voluntary encounter anymore. If they try to walk away, ride your bike away, run away, so on and so forth, they're obstructing our ability to do our job, and there's a law for that. We can actually arrest you just for that. Don't even worry about the shoplifting, the fact that you ran away from our custody when we were trying to question you, when we had a valid legal reason to do that, is against the law. That's where obstruction, the charge of obstruction comes from. So we have to have suspicion of criminal activity, it's a brief stop, it's not voluntary. The other thing people talk about is Terry frisks, where the officer pats you down for weapons. They can do that if they have reasonable cause to believe you're armed. Could be a bulge in your pocket, you know, something they saw you do, a furtive movement, stuffing something in your pocket, so on and so forth. They have to be able to articulate why they thought you were armed, and then they can pat you down. Tier three is when we have probable cause. That is the level at which we arrest people. We have probable cause to believe you committed a crime. What does that mean? Means you probably did it. We have enough things that we can document that a reasonable person, a judge, would sign a warrant for you if they were standing there with us saying, yeah, you got enough to arrest that person and seize them, seize their freedom of movement. That's what an arrest means. That's your Fourth Amendment right to be a free moving person, and not have any of your personal items seized by the police. Once we get to tier three, then we have the right to make that arrest. The other big one for us is traffic stops. This is where there's a lot of confusion, and we like to go over a few things. When we turn on our blue lights, people say, well, can I just keep going till I get to our, I thinks, a safer place? Yes, you can. My suggestion would be you slow down, turn your turn signal on so you're indicating to the officer, I see you. I've had people put their hand out the window and wave at me and point or something. No problem, that doesn't upset us. We understand, hey, they're gonna go over here and pull in this parking lot instead of pulling on the side of the, on the road or the highway or whatever. Sometimes, we actually really appreciate it so we don't have to be standing out there because we get hit by cars all the time from standing out there. But speeding up, not indicating what you're doing, and just not stopping, now the officer starts to divert his attention from a basic traffic stop to, maybe this person's doing something they shouldn't be doing, and then that's where the agitation and, and the adrenaline start to come in and so on. What we want out of these traffic stops is mutual respect, everybody's on, everybody's calm as can be, and let us do our business, and you may get a ticket, you may not, but the, there's no reason to agitate when the police officer on a traffic stop is very leery of being hurt, as we get killed on traffic stops. So, that's all, all we ask is some understanding in the fact of, let's try to follow some of these rules and keep it as calm as, as we can on both sides. People always ask me, the officer asks you for your driver's license, do we have to give it to them? Yep, you do, by law. If you don't provide a driver's license in the state of Georgia when you're operating a motor vehicle, again, that's an obstruction charge. There's actually a separate charge just for not providing a driver's license. Sometimes an officer will ask you to exit your car, sometimes they'll even tell the passengers in the car to get out of the car and come back to their car, or come back to the rear of the car. People always say, this is probably causes the most arguments on the street that we get with people, is they will argue with the officer till they're blue in the face, you can't make me get out of my car. Yes, they can. There's multiple case laws that have upheld this. And the officer, why, why do they do it? Generally, if there's several people in the car and they're standing out on the side of the road, they would rather have you all in front of them where they can see them and be off the side of the road so they're not, there's too much to pay attention to, and the cars that are coming up behind them, is generally why they will do that. Okay? What if you're armed? They always, people say, you know, I've got a gun in the car, should I tell them? Or, I, I think you should, I think it's always a good idea to say, you know, I just wanna let you know before we get into whatever I did that you stopped me for, I do have a gun in the glove compartment. And then the officer will take you through a series of things of how they feel the most safe. Generally, they'll have you step out, they'll ask you, hey, do you mind if I grab it out of your glove compartment? They'll get it, unload it, and then they'll sit there and talk to you, and then when you're done, you'll be on your way. Generally, what they'll do. What if they request to search your vehicle? Do you have to consent to a search of your motor vehicle? Just because an officer just says, hey, you know, I stopped you for speeding, but, you know, you don't mind if I search your car, do you? You have the right to refuse that search. You have the right to say no, and then they can't go in it. Unless, they have an exception to the warrant rule, which would be, for example, there are several, for example, they're standing there talking to you and they're smelling, they odor marijuana come out of your car, and they say, you know, I'm gonna search your car, and you say no, they're gonna say, yes, I am. It's called this plain smell doctrine, and they can testify, I know what marijuana smells like, there's marijuana coming out of the car, they have the right to search it. If they see marijuana in the car, or a joint in the ashtray, let's say, then you, you don't have the right to refuse. The other thing that they can do is they can bring a canine out, and the canine sniff around your car, an open air sniff, is not a violation of your Fourth Amendment, so if that dog alerts, they can then search your car. So those are the exceptions, but generally speaking, they just pull you over, you can refuse consent. Get a lot of questions about that. Refusing your ID, abnormal anger, so on and so forth, all those things do is heighten the officer's anxiety, and it's not gonna do anybody any good. We talked about arrests already where we have to have probable cause before we can make the arrest. Once they have probable cause and they decide to arrest you, they're gonna tell you, turn around, put your hands behind your back, you're under arrest. This is not the time to argue with the officer about whether or not they have probable cause. Why? Because the officers are taught over 90% of officer injuries occur at this exact moment. When we go to make the physical arrest, or we put your hands behind your back and put you in handcuffs, this is where we get hurt. So any deviation from that is scary to them. Right? It's scary. So, just be aware of that. You can be put in handcuffs and come right back out of handcuffs if they're, you know, continuing to talk to you, you got handcuffs on, and they say, look, we're detaining you, we're trying to figure out about this shoplifting or whatever it is, and you say, well, I was over here, I was doing this, it wasn't me, and they figure it out, they'll go, all right, we apologize, take the handcuffs off and you'll be on your way. But arguing about it while they're putting the cuffs on you is not, not a good time. Talking about our use of force policy, our, our use of force policy is called a constitutional force policy, and really, all that means is there was a, a case law that all police across the country use, excuse me, to some extent, to base their policy off of. Our entire policy is based off this one case law, ten, or, I'm sorry, Graham versus Connor. In 1989, there was an incident between a gentleman and the police, where they stopped this gentleman, they used some force. It turned out that the police were actually wrong about what he was doing. He wasn't trying to commit a crime when they stopped him. There was some resistance to, to the officers while he was trying to explain that he wasn't doing anything wrong. The man was actually in diabetic shock, is part of why he was acting so strangely. What came out of this was the United States Supreme Court saying, we understand there has to be one way that we look at all these cases, because at the time, there were a couple different standards that they were using in different states. And they basically said, in all the states, this is how they're gonna be judged. Are they reasonable and necessary? And it won't be looked at from hindsight, which is 2020, we can't look back on this, it has to be looked at from the perspective of the officer that was on the scene at the time. And you could, it doesn't have to be that officer that was there, you can use any other officer and say, look, if we put 20 officers in a room together, and they were put in this situation, is what they did that night reasonable? The severity of the crime, the number of suspects the officer were dealing with at the time, right? And were they endeavoring to escape? Were they resisting or fleeing? And if they are doing some of those things, then what's reasonable starts to ratchet up. Greater force can be used because the officer's dealing with greater resistance or potentially greater danger at the time. That's why sometimes it's reasonable for us to force somebody's hands behind their back and handcuff them, sometimes it's reasonable for us to use a taser, sometimes it's reasonable for us to use our firearm to stop them. But those things aren't interchangeable, because what's reasonable is different every single time. One of the things, you know, this issue for us, and causing a lot of issues in this country, is the amount of mentally ill, homeless, illegal immigration, recidivism, the number of weapons on the street that we're dealing with. And some of these issues, you know, we're arguing now, no, actually, there, there are a lot of people arguing, hey, they should defund part of the police and give that money to social workers and some other people that could deal with people with mental illness and homelessness and other problems. Police have been asking for that for decade. These aren't police problems. But we're the only people left. And when we get out there to a mentally ill person who's an adult, his parents can't control him, he's got a knife, he's trashing the house, mom and dad are in their 60s, he's paranoid schizophrenic off his medication.
60 is not bad for him.
It's old, buddy. It's old.
Show me.
Yeah. You know, I just want you all, what, what are the outcomes that are possible for the police officer? Right? For, for the, for the mentally ill person? There's two things that can happen. There's gonna be a fight, because they won't, they don't wanna go to the hospital, and that's the only option we got. Take him to the hospital, take him to jail, and we gotta make him go. We gotta do something about that in this country. We're not against having social services help us. Don't ever be confused about that, we're not. Who's gonna pay for it? CIT training, something we've been doing for the last several years now, where we go and we are trained by usually social services worker about intervention techniques to use on mentally ill individuals to try to de-escalate it when they start to get angry and so on. And in some cases, it's worked really well for us. And sometimes, you can't de-escalate somebody who doesn't understand what you're talking about. We also have simulators that we use in training, where we use de-escalation techniques, we can use our different weapon systems on it to train ourselves to be smarter, better. I put on there time and distance, that is what we preach now. If we can get farther away from the person, put a car in between us, so on and so forth, where we give, give ourselves more time to react to what they're doing, maybe we can make better decisions about our force if we have to use it. You know, when I came through the police academy, they taught us, you gave somebody three warnings. You asked them to do, like if you're gonna arrest them, ma'am, please put your hands behind your back. The second time you said something to them, you told them, ma'am, put your hands behind your back. The third time, you made her hands go behind her back. They got three chances. Now, I don't know why we were in such a hurry all the time back then, but that's what it was all about, was you weren't, you didn't mess around. You told them, you asked them, you told them, you made them. Chief, chief had to get there in a horse and wagon. He sure. We always try to tell people how to file a complaint. People say, you know, we're not approachable enough, and I think in times past, that's very true, and I'm sure there's agencies to this day. For us, you, anybody in the police department can take a complaint. So the front receptionist, when you walk in, say, I wanna make a complaint on a police officer. The first thing she can say is, let me get you a supervisor. And she's supposed to, or he's supposed to, because then you'll be going to somebody that can do something about it, potentially. But if there's no supervisor in the building, she's gonna give you something to write with and, tell me about it. And that will go up the chain. So multiple avenues for filing a complaint. People ask, can I be anonymous? You can be anonymous, we understand people don't feel safe making a complaint on the police. The only thing I'll remind you is that we'd like to have your name and so on, because someone like me, who does our internal affairs investigations, really wants somebody to call back and maybe probably come sit down with you and, and let me hear your side of the story. You get a lot more information than if, if you just jot down a paragraph on a piece of paper by me talking to you, and finding out there may be some things that you know, that you don't even know you know, that's gonna help me do a better job investigating that complaint. So just think about that. All our complaints are logged and they are, they are all investigated. Once we do an internal affairs on a police officer, that is a record that does not go away as long as they're employed. With us, plus seven years. Why an OPS division? The chief said he never remembers what it's called. Why do we have an officer professional standards? Because it encompasses hiring, we do their background checks when we just meet them, we do their background checks, we do their polygraph, we get them hired, we teach them, train them policy, train them how to be a police officer through our FTO program, send them to the police academy, get them back, they're trained with a, with a police officer that's been around for a while, and we keep records on all of that, and then we help write the policy. So when they get in trouble, to me, it just makes sense that they're gonna come and answer questions from those same people. Because generally, it's gonna be, were they trained wrong, or do they just not listen to their training? Were they trained on their policy? If so, did they just not listen to the policy? And if so, those people know that, we already have the documentation, and we can write the report and be done with it, without having to go and interview a bunch of other people in the department about who did what to when, and who told them what, and so on. All the internal affairs, when they come in, if we believe it's gonna be in internal affairs, the chief, we go to the chief, and the chief signs off on a piece of paper, that's gonna be an IA, and then we, then we begin, and we don't stop until it's done. Officer-involved shootings, we get several questions about this, we do not investigate our own officer-involved shootings. We call the GBI, and at this point in Georgia, just about everybody does. I'm, I don't know who doesn't anymore. Well, some of the big agencies, Atlanta and DeKalb and Gwinnett and so on, they used to try to handle their own, so they had enough people that they thought they could do that, and they could do it impartially and so on, everybody uses the GBI now. It's a separate agency, and they handle it, we don't, they don't talk to us about what they're doing, they just do it, they ask us for documents and some other things, they usually give us a list, we get them, they come and get it, there's no discussion about what they're gonna do and what they're not gonna do till it's over with. When it's done, they bring those findings to the district attorney's office directly. And they sit down with them and talk to them about that, and the district attorney office decides whether or not a crime was committed, and if so, then the DA directly charges that crime. And if so, then the DA directly charges that crime and prosecutes it. If the, uh, if the DA's office here, I don't know what they do everywhere else, if the DA's office here decides the officer committed no crime, then we get back a copy of it, they give us a letter saying this officer is not gonna be prosecuted for X, Y, and Z. And then it's all about our policy. So the internal affairs investigator has nothing to do with the crime. He has to do with policy. If they violated our policy, even if they didn't violate a crime, then they're subject to discipline all the way up to termination. And we have done that multiple times where we found no crime was committed or the DA's office said they weren't gonna charge him, they didn't have enough evidence or whatever. And I take it to the chief, and the chief says, "That's not what we're all about here." They're gone. That's how internal affairs, uh, work. You give me just a second, I'll switch over to this annual report. And all of you should have, uh, a copy of it in front of you. Um, and understand about use of force reporting. There are different types of force. You'll see in that handout in front of you, end of your report, talks about soft hand. Soft hand is when we have to make somebody go into handcuffs. They don't just turn around and put their hands behind their back. The officer has to grab their wrists and physically make the handcuffs go on because they're resisting slightly. Okay? They don't, it's not striking them, tackling them, any of that. It's just, they gotta grab them and sometimes people wanna fight and do this number with us and argue and so on. That's a soft hand control technique. So you'll see that. Hard hand is when we use some type of strike. Whether it be an elbow strike, a knee strike. Sometimes they'll punch them, that doesn't happen very often anymore. A baton strike, everybody knows what a baton looks like, police baton, a nightstick. Uh, very, very few of them, I'm not sure we had any of those last year. The officers don't want to use them. Uh, taser, everybody knows. OC is the spray, uh, that they spray in people's eyes. Uh, we, I think we had one of those last year.
You're on the first page, back page?
First page. I don't know if, if they copied it front and back, I'm not sure. You're gonna have to look for it. I don't, I don't make them front and back. But we're right at the beginning. Uh, this, this was, this isn't gonna be in your report yet. I'm gonna get to the numbers here in just a second. What we report, so that you understand the difference. What we make our officers report is every time they have to make somebody go into handcuffs, like I told you, they have to force their wrists together, that is a use of force. There are some agencies, you have to get to a strike or a taser or something like that. They consider that to be a little bit of greater use of force. They don't want that many uses of force reported every time. We just have to forcefully put them into handcuffs. You'll see that that number is fairly large for us. Uh, but other agencies don't even re- require. Uh, we review every, every use of force. The officers have to go in, we have a special, uh, computer program where they have to go in and enter that report that they use this force, what type of force it was, and a whole bunch of other information about it. And then that immediately gets, uh, broadcast that a use of force occurred to every member of the command staff of our department. So we know what happened, and we can look at it. And then I bring it into a command staff meeting, usually within that week. And we all look at whatever video there is of that and decide whether that meets our policy. We wanna see every single one of them. Now, we're somewhere where you can follow along. Where you see on there, the very beginning, under the opening statements and that, where you'll see how many officers were allotted. We can have a hundred and one police officers here. Right now, we have eighty-seven. That's a problem. But that's where we are right now in this country, across the nation, in police departments. We cannot hire anybody. Nobody wants to do this job anymore. And we recruit and recruit, and we try to do a bunch of things and try to make more incentives and so on, and we will continue to do that. But that is where we are right now. So our annual calls for service, how many times we have contact with citizens out there? It was fifty-nine thousand, some change this last year. We wrote eleven thousand reports, two thousand extra reports, we arrested twenty-two hundred people. We gave fifty-five hundred citations. Out of eighty-six hundred, see, we don't give a ticket every time we pull somebody over. This is our crime data from this year. So you can see, uh, these are what are referred to as part one crimes. These are the, the big ones. And these are our numbers here in Douglasville, not Douglas County, just to see the limits. So you, obviously, larceny is, petty theft is gonna always be the biggest thing. Shoplifting, stealing somebody's lawnmower, whatever, so on and so forth. And here are our use of force. Out of the fifty-nine thousand times we had contact with citizens this year, we used force a hundred and thirty-four times. That is point two-two percent of the time. Two-tenths of a percent. We used force. A lot of people don't know that. Sometimes on TV, all you see is the bad stuff. If they catch us doing something on a video, you're gonna see that on CNN, Fox, MSNBC, and every local channel there is. And I don't have a problem with that. Except for this number never gets talked about. How many contacts we have and how many times we deal with the public that are completely peaceful? As they should be. And how many times we probably could've used some force and our, our men and women did not. They stood out there and took the abuse and never used any force whatsoever. We had three times out of the hundred and fifty-four that we found, we felt that that was not within our policy for one reason or another. Uh, uh, we didn't, we didn't think it, it met our policy. One firearm, we did shoot somebody this year. He pointed a assault rifle at our police officer. And he did shoot him. We did not punch anybody. We bit one person with our K-9. We had two-hundred-and-twelve soft hand control techniques, like we talked about, where they make them go into handcuffs. Ten other, those are usually when we pit somebody during a high-speed chase, that's considered a use of force. Or we ram into the back of their car and spin them out so they don't keep driving recklessly. Uh, there were a couple of times where an officer tackled the person, they considered that an other. Uh, fifteen times we tased somebody. And one impact munition, SWAT team has a, an, an impact weapon that shoots out like a beanbag or a little, uh, wooden block. And we had one, one discharge of that impact weapon. Uh, we did six IA investigations, four of them were sustained. Uh, and you'll see fourteen violations. Uh, many times when I do an IA investigation, I'll look at what the officer did, and they may be guilty of violating three of our policies, all at the same time. Right? So that's why there's more sustained violations than there even reports taken. Uh, disciplined from those IAs. On one of them, we, we, we found that the officer didn't do anything wrong. Three of them, we wrote them up, a write-up to us, is a written documentation. Goes in that same database as the use of force and all the other stuff we do, and it never goes away. It's, it's never erased. Zero suspensions, and two people either were terminated or they resigned in lieu of termination. Sometimes they quit before we terminate. They know it's coming and they say, "Chief, I'm so sorry, I resign." And we say, "Accept it." Thirty-three pursuits, that was a lot this year for some reason, one of the things we'll keep an eye on. Uh, sixty officers involved, we usually do try to have at least two officers involved in a pursuit because we want more officers than our people in the car that we're trying to catch. We can't, we don't allow them to have more than three. Cause then it's just a bunch of cops running around going fast. So we try to keep it down to a minimum. Sometimes you will see, we can't control what the county or the state patrol does. Sometimes they'll jump up in there with us. Uh, uh, one of those pursuits we found violated our policy. Usually what that is, I'll have to go back and look at this particular one. Usually the officer doesn't turn their blue lights and siren, usually they turn their blue lights on, they don't turn their siren on right away. They're talking on the radio, they get discombobulated, their adrenaline's going or whatever, and then after a minute or so, they remember they gotta turn their siren on. Well, we gig them for that because they need to have both on for it to be legal and proper and within our policy. We had forty-seven complaints. Five of them had merit. Where we went back and investigated them and we could say, "Yeah, they, they did that." Usually it's rudeness and professionalism. Officer loses his temper, loses his cool, says something they shouldn't have, or they were, uh, patronizing to the person. You know, lost their patience, whatever. And so we gig them on those, they usually get a write-up for that unless they've done it multiple times, and then they start getting, uh, suspended. We did have thirty commendations where people took the time to write in to us on our, uh, website or call us, uh, and tell us they appreciated what we did. Which I, I thought that was pretty good during COVID times. We had forty-one accidents, twenty-four of them were preventable. Uh, we do discipline our officers for accidents, we have a little matrix. So if they have an at-fall accident, uh, well, let me, make, the easy way to describe it, if they have two at-fall accidents within two years, usually they back into something. Uh, we take their car away from them for some amount of time. They have a take-home car, it's one of their benefits, uh, we take it away. If they do it again, back into something else, then they can, uh, start getting suspended and other dis, you know, we'll, we'll keep going up the, up the ladder. Um, just to give you a couple demographics, because I'm about to talk to you just for a brief minute about our demographics at the police department. We get, probably one of the big questions we get from the community, especially from the minority community is, "I wanna know what your agency looks like, cause I wanna know that it looks like the community at large." And that's a, that's a tall task for any a- agency, I'm not making excuses for ours. Um, it's a tall task because it's harder to recruit, uh, minorities and females than any other demographic. And so I try to put this up there to give some context to what our numbers look like. So for agents, there's four-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand police departments in the country. Uh, but only, uh, you know, a certain amount of those are our size. So for agencies that, that serve thirty, or twenty-five thousand to forty-nine thousand, we fall within that. This is the, the average minority, uh, or I should, I'll start, I'll break it down. African-American, six percent in a police department is average. Five percent Hispanic, one percent other, and usually about nine and a half, ten percent female. That's the makeup of law enforcement in this country. So how are we doing? This year, we hired nine African-Americans and four white officers with a sixty-nine percent minority hiring rate. We have, when I did this report, we had ninety-two, now it's, as I said, we have eighty-seven. By the time we had ninety-two, this is the breakdown. So forty percent minority, seventeen percent female. But we like it to be more? Yeah, we would like it to be more. But, once you understand the national averages of what we're, what we're fighting against. Here's our civilians, personnel. Our education level, one of the things here we are big on is, uh, college. And we will help pay for it, uh, for many, um, for most of the time, still to current date. We only hire officers that have two years of college or they were in the military for four years before they get here. But when we get into an emergency, when we only have eighty-seven police officers, we go back down to what most agencies in the nation use, and that's a high school diploma. So we will talk to them and interview them and so on. Uh, and so our, actually, our number down there dropped. I think last year we were at, uh, well, you guys have it in front of you, seventy-five, seventy-six percent, we're down to seventy-three percent. That has some college. Here's another problem. We have eighty-seven police officers. Last year, we lost sixteen of them. That was a good year. It goes, it hovers somewhere between eighteen and twenty usually that we lose. So if you have, and they almost always come out of patrol, they're the newest officers we have. And so you have forty-five police officers in patrol, and you lose twenty of them every year. That's a problem. How many of them have experience out there? How many of them have been in, been in fights? How many of them have already been through high-stress situations and so on and so forth? Well, you know it's about half at any given time. The other ones are new. And that's a problem. So, again, we fight against that, we'll keep fighting against it. But keeping these folks here is a, is a difficult task right now, and it's not just us, it's, it's across the nation. Here's our detective division, two thousand cases that they, uh, had last year, made a hundred and forty-four arrests. Uh, closed out sixteen hundred of them. They were busy. Uh, the report goes into several other things. I know I don't have all night tonight. Winkleplex chomping at the bit up there to get in front of a group of people on TV. Does anybody have any questions for me before I turn this over and you talk a little bit about gangs? Much more exciting than stats, I know. Anybody? Hold on. I just want, we wanted to pick up on the TV, sir. I know nobody wants a microphone.
I just wanted to ask you, how long is an officer, uh, patrolled? Is, does he do an hour, eight hours, like, uh, most people do it, like, twelve hours? And they're not allowed to do an extra shift for another four hours and anything if he's short-handed?
We have a cap on how many hours they can work. What they usually do is they work, and then they wanna go work an extra job to make enough money to support the family. And we have the cap that if they'll work twenty-four hours a day, then they get fired.
Okay.
So, yeah, we have.
We have very specific policies about how many hours they're allowed to work in a row. Yep. Ma'am?
I have a question about some of the dates in the slides. They reference twenty-sixteen and twenty-eighteen, but the paperwork's just twenty, is more current. So is that just the slide as it been updated?
Uh, I'll have to look at that. Um, I do, I do recycle this every year and I put the new data in. Now, some of it, I don't know if you're, like, the Bureau of Justice Statistics and some of that stuff, you'll see in there, that's twenty-sixteen, that's the last time they did it. Um, but thi- this up here is not a comparison to last year, this is. So this is correct. If I made a mistake up there, I just didn't notice it when I was updating it.
Okay.
Okay?
When you started out, you were saying what we should be saying to our teenagers if they're pulled over for a traffic stop or at the mall.
Sure.
Can you expand on that? What lessons do you want to give us besides be respectful and polite?
Yeah. Um, you know, I think the, the, the bottom line is, is we have to learn to, and, and our officer, we, we're constantly telling them to. Every encounter you have should not be, um, a, 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 uh, an aggravation for either party. Now, I understand people don't like to get pulled over by the police cause they think they're gonna get a ticket and so on. But if all of us can just remain calm, the officer, the ball then is in his court, he should or she should be remaining calm. The problem that we get is when we come up to the car or we stop somebody in person and we start to talk to them, and that person is already aggressive towards us. It's difficult to keep your cool when somebody else is being aggressive towards you, even if you're a police officer. They should, we train them to deal with it. We train them that they're gonna get spit on and cussed out and they're gonna talk about your mom. But they're also a human being underneath that shirt. And so all we could ask is just try to have mutual respect for one another for as long as you can, try to get through that. The problem that we have with the kids that are told by the parent, "You call me right away," is that's exactly what they'll do and they won't interact with the police officer whatsoever during a traffic stop. Which I told you guys before is obstruction. And so then the officer starts to get aggravated and they just, all the kids will do to us is, "Hand me the phone." They'll be like, "Here, talk to him. Talk to my dad. I can't talk to you." Not gonna, you know, they're not gonna talk to your dad. I'm talking to you. You were the one that just ran that red light. And so I gotta talk to you and I need your drive- And so I gotta talk to you and I need your driver's license. And now I've been out here for five minutes. I got other calls on. And it just becomes a situation that it never had to become. And a lot of times, it's the parents that are telling the kids, you know, and, and, and for, for many people, it's because they don't trust us. So, and the other thing we get is they start filming, you know, which none of our people at this point should have any problem with that. They're filming too, as long as you're still giving them what they're asking for. "I need your driver's license. I need your proof of insurance," you know, so on and so forth, you know? They may come up, ask for your phone number. They're, they're trying to fill out a ticket. As long as you're doing the thing, those things, you can film them all day long, you know? Does it aggravate them a little bit? Probably does, but it's not against the law. So just, just common sense things like that.
Do you summarize briefly what is the difference between daytime and nighttime stops? You guys have, uh, young adults, teenagers driving them. What's the main thing between daytime and nighttime stops? Visibility's not that clear.
Right.
That you have a courage sometimes with the officer that this happening at night. You know, what is, what is some of the, some of the problems that some officers explain at night?
Uh, well, I mean, the, the question up here was what is the difference between daytime traffic stops and nighttime traffic stops? And obviously, it's visibility for the officer. The officer is gonna be more tense at night. Uh, also, fun fact, that's where all the new officers are. Right? That's who goes to work at night. They work here, they work from six o'clock at night till six o'clock in the morning. So as you get more years under your belt, if you got a choice between doing that or working from six in the morning and six at night, that's what you're gonna choose. So, uh, those are factors. When the officer's more amped up, more worried about being injured, are there more injuries at night? Yes, there are. So, uh, and then knowing you're probably most likely gonna be dealing with a person who's new at their job. And we've all dealt with people who are new at their job, whatever that job is. So, uh-
Some of the best things you can tell teenagers is to get your license left, uh, just turn your inside lights on, have your license ready, wrist bracelet. And don't go for the glove box and all that other stuff.
Sure, that, yeah.
Out to get a ride, right?
Right. That, that's, that, yes, sir. If I didn't understand, that's what you meant. You wanted specific things. Yeah, if you can turn lights on, have your stuff ready sitting there in your hand, your hands up on the wheel, talk politely. Then, yeah, that, that all starts to de-escalate any of that anxiety that they may have and they realize, okay, this is going the way it should. That's all the officers are ever really looking for is it during any encounter, is this going the way it should or is this going south? Because if it starts to go south on what they're expecting it to be in a normal encounter, then they're wondering why. Why is this person acting this way? Why are they talking to me? Why are they so aggressive? So on and so forth. I think we have one more question back here and then I think we- Go ahead, sir.
I was gonna ask you, in, in dealing with mental illness, is there anything in your policy specific as to how to detect? Or acknowledge if the individual is in that state of mind or is this how?
We, we do. We have, we have a policy about dealing with mentally ill and we also train on it every year. And that CIT training I talked about is part of it. But, uh, but, uh, training on the mentally ill, mentally incapacit- incapacitated, um, they, they, there are some specific things about how to figure out if somebody's, uh, has dementia or paranoid schizophrenia and so on, how to talk to them. Uh, I talked, I made mention of putting more distance in between you and them and so on. So, yeah, the officers are, are trained on it and sometimes that training works.
So, and then we'll get ready to go.
Yeah. Who is it? Sorry, sir.
Thank you. Uh, good presentation, good information. Uh, I've actually learned a lot here tonight to the lady's question there. I didn't know, because I usually tell my son or my wife to video if I'm being stopped and I didn't know if I could do that. If I'm asked, if the officer asked me to stop videoing, should I or should I not? And then I have a carry license and I really didn't know whether to, when I give him my license, give him my gun license or not. But to the gentleman's point back there, I'm telling my son, and I'm not reaching for anything when I'm stopped. "You welcome to go over there in that glove compartment. You welcome to get my-" I'm not reaching for anything, but really, really good information. Thank you.
Hi, uh, my name's Ken Winklepleck. I'm a lieutenant here with the Douglasville Police Department. Uh, I work in our special operations division. Our, our unit is responsible for investigating drug crimes, uh, vice crimes such as prostitution, uh, and also gang crimes, gang-related crime. And that's what we're gonna be talking about, um, tonight. First of all, who are you, who are you guys with? Where, where do y'all, what's the name of your group? Boy Scouts? What troop?
Troop two-two-eight.
Troop two-two-eight, okay. All right, representing. Some of the things that you're gonna see in this presentation, uh, involve gang members. And gang members, uh, oftentimes wear so- stuff sorta like what you're wearing, uniform to represent, you know, the groups that they're with. Um, but what's the difference between your group and a street gang? You like to help people? Okay. All right, anything else? All right, well, that's good. Can you guys, one, uh, and I'm talking to troop two-two-eight. Can you guys tell me what a criminal street gang is? Okay, all right, that's a good answer. All right. Do y'all go to school here in Douglas County? Are there gangs in your school? You don't know? Okay, well, that's good. If you don't know, that means you're not bothered by them. All right, and that's a good thing. And it's okay not to know. I'd rather you not know, uh, than, than to have run-ins with them, you know? But, um, anyway, we're gonna talk about gangs, uh, and, and the impact that they are having, uh, on Douglas County. Um, as far as the adults in here, does anybody know of any gang, uh, activity that's been going on here in Douglas County? Nobody? Okay, well, that's a good thing too. Um, but we do have some, some gangs operating, uh, here in Douglas County and we're gonna talk about this, okay? So gangs in Georgia. My team, we're all members of the Georgia Gang Investigators Association, okay? And there's probably five hundred members of that organization throughout the state of Georgia. And once a year, we meet in Savannah and we do a gang conference where we talk about the latest trends, what's going on with gangs in our state and that kinda thing. The new, we keep up to date with the new gang laws that are, uh, uh, being implemented. Um, but in this last meeting that we attended, they gave us a count as to how many gang members there were operating in the state of Georgia. Anybody have, care to take a guess about how many there might be? Two-hundred? Thirty? Ten thousand? Okay. The estimated, there's an estimated seventy-one thousand documented gang members in the state of Georgia. And I don't know whether it's a hundred-and-fifty-nine counties? Hundred, hundred-and-fifty? Okay, um, and the GGIA, Georgia Gang Investigators, and the State Attorney General's Office, they send out surveys to all the law enforcement agencies. And we give them information about gang activities in our area and this is the number that came from that survey. So if there's seventy-one thousand documented, by documented, what I mean is law enforcement has documentation on these gang members. If there's seventy-one thousand documented, there's probably five times as many people that associate with gangs and involve themselves in, in gang activity. All right, so that's a pretty big number. Does the state of Georgia have a gang problem? Lawmakers in the state of Georgia recognize that criminal street gangs are operating in the state and are a danger to society. Proof is in the wording under our Georgia State Code section, all right? And here in, um, here it is. "The General Assembly finds and declares that it is the right of every person to be secure and protected from fear, intimidation, and physical harm caused by activities of violent groups and individuals." So our state lawmakers have recognized that gangs are a problem. And they're also saying that you as citizens of the state of Georgia have a right to be, be protected from those criminal street gangs. "It is not the intent of this chapter, the gang law, to interfere with the, uh, the exercise of the constitutionally protected rights of the freedom of expression and association." Basically, what that means is you have a right to hang out with people that you wanna hang out with as long as it's law-abiding, okay? "The General Assembly recognizes the constitutional right of every person to harbor and express beliefs on any lawful subject whatsoever, to associate lawfully with others who share the same beliefs." Okay, that's your right. "The General Assembly, however, further finds that the state of Georgia is in a state of crisis." So the lawmakers recognize that Georgia is in a state of crisis when it comes to criminal gangs, which has been caused by violent criminal street gangs whose members threaten, terrorize, and commit a multitude of crimes against the peaceful citizens of their neighborhoods. This is in the law. "These activities, both individually and collectively, present a clear and present danger to public order and safety and are not constitutionally protected." Criminal street gangs are not protected by the Constitution to go out and commit whatever crimes they wanna commit, spelled out in the law. "The General Assembly finds that there are criminal street gangs operating in Georgia and that the number of gang-related murders is increasing." Okay? We recently had a homicide in Douglas County around New Year's Eve. That was a gang-related murder. And it is not the only one that we've had here in Douglas County, but it is our most recent. "It is the intent of the General, General Assembly in enacting this chapter to seek the eradication of criminal activity by criminal street gangs by focusing on criminal gang activity and upon the organized nature of criminal street gangs, which together are the chief source of terror created by criminal street gangs." So the lawmaker said, "We are going to give law enforcement the tools to eradicate, to stop, to get rid of criminal street gangs." This is something that just, uh, was passed on, you know, on February, uh, it's not passed yet, but it's in the process. There's a new House bill. This is the seriousness of gangs. Each year, they add a little bit more to the, to the gang statute. And on February eighth, Attorney, Attorney General Chris Carr, uh, introduced a, a new bill that will make it easier for the, uh, State Attorney General to go after gangs throughout the state. And that the, the counties won't matter. They, there won't be any, any blocks for the Attorney General. They can go after, uh, the criminal street gangs that are operating throughout the, the state. "The General Assembly further finds that an effective means of punishing and deterring the criminal activities of criminal street gangs is through forfeiture of the profits, proceeds, and other things acquired, accumulated, or used by criminal street gangs." We have a forfeiture law here in the state of Georgia. And that's what Chief brought up earlier, that that, our Youth Against Violence Program and some of the other programs that the, the city offers are paid for by the funds seized through these forfeitures. Okay, it's a good way to, to spend the money and it's also mandatory by law that some of the, uh, money spent is for, uh, prevention, okay? So what is a criminal street gang? And this is, this is the definition by law. Criminal street gang is a group of three or more people, three or more. We have to have at least three associated in fact, who share a common group identifier. All right? And who engage in criminal gang activity. This picture right here is a, a federal case, um, that was made against a group, a gang called Ghostface Gangsters, which, uh, originated in our prison system. Okay, and the reason I put this up here is that one of the individ- we, Douglasville Police Department assisted, uh, in this investigation because one or more of these people in this picture lived here in, in our county and we were able to, uh, help and make an arrest of, of, uh, those members, okay? So again, just to go over it, three or more associated in fact, who share a common identifier are fine. But it's when they engage in criminal gang activity, that's when they get recognized as a criminal street gang. And we're gonna talk about what criminal gang activity is in a minute. So those are the things, uh, to, to prove, law enforcement to prove that a gang exists. Proof of a, a gang's existence can be shown by evidence of a gang name. They, they call themselves something. What do y'all call yourselves again? Boy Scouts, okay. So a gang name, traditionally Crips, Bloods, Gangster Disciples, that, that type of thing. Then when we break it down into hybrid gangs, non-traditional gangs, they come up with just anything and, and we'll talk, we'll show some examples. So we have to show that it, that the, uh, gang has a name. There's some examples. All right, here's one of, uh, example of one of our hybrid gangs. This group right here called themselves BBMG, Block Business Music Group, all right? They were a legitimate rap group. They went to the state, um, can't remember the name of the office. Anyway, they got an LLC, okay? They, they were, they were trying to become official. But what happened was there was three or more, they had a common identifier, BBMG. But what happened was they decided to pay for their studio time, which I guess is expensive. They would sell drugs. And that's when we came, became involved in this case. So BBMG, three or more, had a common identifier. They were fine. Once they engaged in selling dope, they became a criminal street gang.
Tell them what a, a different, a hybrid gang, what was that hybrid gang?
Okay, like I said, the, the traditional gangs are known like Crips and Bloods and that type of thing, the stuff you hear on TV all the time. A hybrid gang is not really, uh, it's a mixture of people. They, they, they might be, uh, made up of African-American and whites and Hispanics altogether. Um, they don't show it, they don't align themselves up with Bloods and Crips. They might take the name of a, you know, the street that they live on, um, or right here, BBMG, for example. That's a hybrid name. That's not a, a traditional gang, okay? Common signs and symbols adopted by the gang to identify and re- and represent the gang. So you guys have a hand signal, right? What is it? There it is, okay? Well, that's, a lot of times, these guys do too, as, as a way to identify themselves, all right? Here's some examples. This is, uh, most of these pictures that you're gonna see are cases that we made that have already been through the court process and are done with. And that's why we can show them to you. Okay, we do have some gang cases right now that we can't get into, uh, because they're still active. But anyway, so this guy's throwing up. Can anybody tell me what they see when that hands, hand signal? The hand sign? No, he's making a B right there for Blood. This is a Blood gang, all right? So Bloods, they, what, what color do you think Bloods associate themselves with? Red, okay, everybody knows that. Good. You see red in this picture? Okay? There's something else in this picture. It's hard to see, but right there, there is a, um, red bandana. And these are things that when you, when you get training on how to investigate gangs, you'll learn this. They use a red bandana as a symbol of the Blood gang, but it's in his right pocket. That actually has some significance. Bloods are, are said to- Bloods are said to represent the right side of things. Crips are said to represent the left side of things. So, if this was a Crip gang, that bandana would be hanging out of his left back pocket, okay?
Do you think of mental craziness? Y'all saw the Super Bowl, right? You see Snoop Dogg come out there and look, Crip walking. Yeah, so if he had a bandana, something hanging out of pocket, it'd be on his left side. So, see, that's the mental desperation that these young kids are getting. Instead of trying to learn heavily some math and science, they gotta learn the book of knowledge. They gotta know all this stuff.
Anybody watch the Super Bowl? Did everybody see Snoop Dogg dancing? That was actually, he was doing the Crip walk. He was representing Crips in the video. Fans of Snoop Dogg in here? I am. I like some of his... I like some of his music, right? But, you know, you get into the background, and you know what all that was built off of, alright? That's right. And that, and our young kids seeing that. Here's another symbol that we took. There's a gang that calls themselves Slime or Young Slime Life, okay? These are the things, the things I'm showing you too, for parents, grandparents. You know, you see these things, your kids in possession of these things, you gotta question what they are, what they truly mean. They're gonna lie to you, most likely. Most parents that we come into contact with, when we bring gang charges on their kids, they tell us that they had no idea that they were involved in this kind of stuff. But the signs were there, the symbols were there. They just didn't know what to look for.
You gotta go into that room. They live in your house. You gotta go in that room. They don't have to have no door on their bedroom. You pay the... You pay the mortgage, but you need to go in there and you need to look down. Everything he got in here is red, blue, black. Every time that gentleman come over here to see him, they always got on the same thing. Oh, daddy, we are... We just that. Right, let's go in this room. Let me see if I find some... Or roper bees. Let me go see if I can find some drawings where he draws some sick point stars. He got the book of knowledge in here. Yeah, let me go up under this table. Go check in the room. Because if they doing that, they can bring that mess to your house. We have our seven kids, that was that came by. We have our seven kids from Stewartville School, and this crazy. So, they gonna go to one kid's house, not on the show like they gonna go in there and jump on. They dead open the door. Now, you got seven little kids out there.
Calling the ones out that they wanted.
Yeah, they calling one out in the house. That goes to the mindset. You gonna hurt some of them kids. Or you gonna be like, wait, y'all been gone? And guess what? They work around at two or three o'clock in the morning breaking into cars, and they got guns. And see, they been shot them, then we catch them. Then they send them over to that jail, put in the hurry, a crime. And mom and him trying to say, well, I didn't know. Man, you got some kids, grandkids, whatever, you better go check them, put them in check, because we gonna do what we have to do to keep this community safe. You better believe that. Bottom line, we on it. Is there a book of knowledge?
Yeah, I'll... I got an example here in a minute.
Book of damn.
We have a few actual Crips and Bloods. Most of their gang-banging activities don't occur here. They live here, and they take them down to Atlanta, you know, and that kind of thing. But the problem is, when they come back and they've done something, then somebody's gonna come back out and retaliate in our city, you know? But as far as... We do have some documented Crips and Bloods and traditional gang members, but most of our problem is with the younger people and the hybrid stuff, okay? Just to let you know, this was a picture taken of this group planning a shooting, which they did in an area of our city, and they did the shooting right at the location and time when an elementary school bus was dropping kids off. One of our best witnesses was an eight-year-old in that particular case, but we rounded them up, prosecuted them, and they're still in prison. So, common identifiers, we said a name, common signs and symbols. And here's some Crip stuff, okay? This is from actual cases that we've worked. Talked about the Blood side is what? Right side? Crip side is what? Left side. So, throwing up the C for Crip, holding the blue bandana, the color of the Bloods, in which hand? Left hand. Blue bandana wrapped around which leg? His left leg, okay? That's all significant in building a gang case. We gotta go in and explain this stuff, okay? Tattoos. This guy was a member of the Eight Tray Gangster Crips, which is a national gang that has members here in the state of Georgia. Eight Tray, you see the A3? Their motto is, "They're always moving." So, you got the MVN, Eight Tray Moving, alright? They've adopted the Texas Ranger logo for Tray, in the Eight Tray, and he wears that proudly. Here's another thing, the handicap symbol. It's kind of hard to see, I got a better picture of it later, but the handicaps symbol, which they've adopted as Crip, cripple, and they use that as a symbol for Crips as well. But these examples... This picture here was captured on social media. Social media is a tool for us to find the documentation we need to prove that these guys are what they are, alright? This picture here was taken of his tattoos after his arrest. And we document tattoos. When somebody goes, gets arrested, they got a strip down, and somebody, deputy or whatever, will take pictures of all their tattoos. And we use them in... This particular picture was used in his case, and in his case, he got arrested and convicted of murder, okay? But this, in this picture, was used to help show that he was a gang member, that he had that gang mentality when he committed the offensive murder. Ghostface Gangsters, another... This is the gang that started in prison, but now has moved out onto the streets, okay? Their primary color is green, alright? Seven, six, seven. What's the seventh letter of the alphabet, guys? G. How about sixth letter? G for Ghost? I mean, yeah, G for Ghost? F for Face? And then G again for Gangsters, Ghostface Gangsters. So, that's what they use there, alright? And then, they also use the seven-pointed star as a symbol, and for the L, Loyalty, the H, Honor, and so on. This is a female that I've known for a while, who is a female member of Ghostface Gangsters. And that was her brand, is what she called it, that tattoo put on her neck to show her affiliation with the Ghostface Gangsters. They're mainly known for drug dealing. But their crimes have gone from just drug dealing within the prison system to drug dealing outside the prison system, which has turned into violence. And wasn't too long ago that a Ghostface Gangster shot a Cobb County police officer during a traffic stop. They're a violent criminal street gang. Bloods, again, we showed you that B hand sign, everything's on the right side. This right here, they use the five-pointed star. Crips use a six-pointed star, Bloods use a five-pointed star. In this particular display, Murder, that actually stands for Sex Money Murder, that is a Blood gang, alright? G-Shine. G-Shine is another Blood gang. We actually had G-Shine members here in Douglasville. Pyro, alright? Brim, Five-Nine Brim. Different subsets of the Blood gang, alright? So, we got the name, we got signs and symbols, alright? We got a tire, clothing. Again, parents and grandparents. You see this kind of stuff written on the hoodies, on the T-shirts, question it, find out what it really means, not what they... Just what they tell you, alright? This is somebody who's from Bankhead Homes? Bankhead Court. Where in that location, they have the young moneymakers, most dangerous clique, young dangerous clique, and this person was representing all of those because he was from that area, okay? But this is gang evidence. This is a white supremacist gang, the American Skins. We made a case against five of their members, and they all wore the American Skins T-shirt. Tattoos, we talked about the Eight Tray Crip already. These are just more examples of tattoos that are gang-related. They're used to show association or allegiance to their gang, and law enforcement documents Tattoos tell a story. The two pictures I'm going to show you is the same person, same tattoo that's been modified. When this guy got this tattoo, he was a Gangster disciple. GD. Seven-four, alright? See it there? He had a problem, he had a beef with members of his own gang, so he decided to break away from the gang. Can you see the difference? It's split down the middle, represented him splitting from the gang. You saw the seven-four, seven-four Gangster disciple? Now, he is seven-four. What's the eleventh letter of the alphabet? K. What do you think the K represents in this situation? Killer. So, now, he went from a Gangster disciple to a Gangster disciple killer mentality. And actually, the name of his new gang is CVL Conservative Vice Lords, alright? So, the tattoos can tell a story. And it's because we had documented... These photos are probably about five years apart, because we had documented him back then and him now, we could tell that there was something going on there with him and his gang. Graffiti and social media. Social media is now the new graffiti. Used to be, we'd have people painting graffiti on the walls and that kind of thing, and it was a very... Still is when it does happen, but it's a valuable tool for us, because if you know how to read it, if you're trained to know how to read these things, you can tell that there's a problem. Right here, we had a gang called Hard Times Thirteen, a Hispanic gang. They marked their territory, it was a hotel wall. There was a Blood group that came in and crossed out Hard Times Thirteen, a sign of disrespect, put their symbol above the Hard Times, sign of dominance. And then, what is 187? Anybody know? 187 is the California Penal Code for murder. So, it was a threat, okay? So, what we did when we got this picture is we went to our Bloods that we had documented, and we went to our Hard Times that we were documenting, and we made sure that basically nothing went on between the two of them, alright? Social media, like I said, is the new graffiti. It reaches a lot more people than, you know, if I paint something on Fairburn Road, there'll be a number of cars that ride by there and might see it, you know, during the day, but social media can be blasted out to thousands of people in just a second. But I talked about in this, the handicap sign used in there, that's Crip social media, okay? So, they adopt the signs and symbols, and they use them in their postings, alright? And we capture this. Now, we, law enforcement, we develop pages, fake pages, where we can friend the suspected gang members, and we're able to... They accept us, and we can see what's going on. That's how we capture these things. Just more examples. About five or business. Book of knowledge, here's an example from one page, okay? The rules, basically. No snitching is number one, alright? No black-on-black crime, no stealing. It's just a list of the rules. And a lot of the book of knowledges will also have the history of the gang written in them, who started it, you know, where it got started, when, all that kind of stuff. That's what a book of knowledge is. Just real quick, I'd say we're going to cover criminal gang activity. So, basically, what it means is, really crime in general. If a gang member commits crime, this is what's going to happen. They're going to get arrested for that crime, a robbery, let's say, alright? If I'm not a gang member, I'm going to get punished for the robbery, and that's it. If I'm a gang member, because there's gang laws, I'm going to get punished for the robbery, but then I'm also going to get punished because I did the robbery when I was a gang member. So, you got basically double punishment for gang members, alright? It's pretty... It's pretty cut and dry, it's that simple. Gang members get punished more severely than non-gang members, because we have gang laws. Two more things, this Chief talked about, you know, going in your kid's room, that kind of thing, see what they're up to. This is a roster of a street gang that was actually on the bedroom wall of a kid's... In a kid's bedroom. And the kid had a padlock on his door that his parents didn't have a key for. We found it when we executed a search warrant there and had to kick the bedroom door in, and that's when the parents saw what was going on, what he was involved with. Last thing is, because there's a whole bunch more, but we don't have time. Drill music. Has anybody ever heard the term drill music, okay? Music is such an influence on the kids, and drill music, it's a form of rap music known for its violent content. All they talk about, the lyrics are just about violence, killing, shooting, drugs, that type of thing. These are some of the artists, right here on the right, alright? I would encourage parents, grandparents, to know what music your kids are listening to. It's extremely popular, and it's feeding that mentality. And if these guys continue to go unchecked and continue to make money putting that stuff in our kids' heads, our kids are just going to continue to kill each other, okay?
If it courses...
You have any? Oh.
What's like destroying a whole community? Like, no people high school or just... I've heard it's...
Yeah, well, again, we're talking about Douglasville. We don't really have a recruitment problem where we got a lot of older guys coming into our elementary schools and recruiting. That is not really the issue. The issue happens, the recruiting happens, elementary school and middle school, they're trying to recruit the younger kids into it, and high school, getting the younger kids. But we don't have really adults coming in, recruiting, taking our kids, and that kind of thing. But generally, around the age of 12 is when the kids start trying to decide if they want to... They think it's cool and that kind of thing, and they start exposing themselves to that kind of mentality. Information is what we need to help intervene in these... In... Information is what we need to help intervene in these, in the gang stuff. So, if you've seen some of the stuff, some of the signs and symbols and that kind of thing. And a lot of people think it's a joke, you know? It's just kids being young and stupid and all that. But then, we have incidents of violence, shootings and murders involving these kids that everybody thought was just a good kid, you know, just getting mixed up, you know, that kind of thing. We need information. So, if you... Like Chief says, if you see something like this, report it. Report it to us.